Madam Clerk, if you will, please call the roll.
Commissioner Smith?
Present.
Commissioner Liner?
Here.
Commissioner Mark?
Here.
Commissioner McCabe?
Here.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Here.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Here.
Ladies and gentlemen, if you will, please let us stand together as we salute and pledge to the American flag. Then if you will, please remain standing as the Vice Chair will lead us in our prayer this evening. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for...
Father God, we turn to you tonight and give you thanks. We thank you for the beautiful day you've given us. We thank you for our health that we're able to be here, Lord, and to serve. I thank you for each one of this board members, that they're willing to serve the citizens in their district. And I pray, Lord, that you would give us wisdom as we consider whatever subjects and whatever issues coming before us tonight. I thank you most of all, Lord, for this wonderful country you've given us. I thank you for the men and women who work in our counties and the men and women serving in our military all over the world, Lord. I thank you for each one of them. I pray now that you would go with us, guide us, be with our families, and watch over us through the rest of this day as our prayer in the name of our Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Ladies and gentlemen, welcome this evening to the Board of Commissioners meeting. This is your meeting and to those that may be viewing online. I would ask that those that are in attendance, if you would, please make sure that your cellphones are on silence so they would not disrupt this meeting. We would appreciate it. Commissioners, you have before you your agenda. Are there any items that you desire to add or to remove tonight? Any changes?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion that we combine both public hearings together tonight.
You're talking about petition of citizens?
Petitions of citizens.
Okay. All right, we've had that we would combine the petition of citizens for agenda topics and for general topics. Are there any other items that you desire to add or delete or change? And also, I would ask that if you would please, at the end of the meeting, as item 12, to add a closed session, it would be a personnel item. The general statute on that, we will have it by the end, the close of the meeting today, that general statute, so staff will please have that ready. Are there any other items? Hear none, do I have a motion that we accept?
Second.
I have a motion, a second, any discussion on the motion to approve the agenda and necessary changes? Hear none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passed. First item we have before the board tonight is the public hearing on the proposed fiscal year 2022-2023 budget. Mr. Vice Chair, we will be asking you in a minute for any individuals that may have signed up, but Mr. County Manager, you want to make some opening comments?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, citizens who are here in attendance tonight watching live on TV. This is an exciting time for us. This is a culmination of a lot of hard work for the annual budget. Tonight is the public hearing where the citizens have had an opportunity to review our budget since May the 16th, for them to make comments about the spending plan for the county for the next year. As I recommended, the budget, as it still remains after Commissioners' work sessions, the budget is balanced, and it does not include any tax rate increase or any use of fund balance this year. So, Ms. Chairman, unless there's questions, and me, I'd recommend you open the public hearing.
All right, any questions for the County Manager? Hear none? Okay, do I have a motion that we would open the public hearing?
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion on the motion? Hear none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we stand in public hearing. Mr. Vice Chair?
No one has signed up to speak at the public hearing.
Okay, as we always do, we want to give anyone the opportunity that may have missed it or meant to sign up for this public hearing on the proposed budget, the opportunity. All right?
I can motion go out or close.
Second.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to close the public hearing, any discussion on the motion? Hear none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, back to the board. We've got item two, the petition of citizens, and this would be agenda topics and general topics. We would ask each speaker, if you will, as you come forward, to please state your name and your address. Also, you have three minutes, which will be governed by a time clock. Please be respectful of that, and Mr. Vice Chair?
Yeah, we have two people. The first is Mr. Ray Griffin.
Good evening, sir.
We moved it to first for you tonight.
He was that good, I'm proud of him. Ray Griffin, best one on the front, I'm proud of all of them. I said, "In God we trust," inside and outside, and I just want to say a few things about that. And it says, "In God we trust," it notes that the political and economic prosperity of the nation is in God's hands. I'm pretty sure you went through some of this when the other gentlemen came through. It said, "The Bible states that many will have their profession but not possession." There was a senator that stood before Congress not too long ago and stated, "We've done everything that we can to stop the school shootings and everything that's going on," and he said, "Nothing has changed." And then he said, "Maybe we need to put back into the Ten Commandments, 'In God we trust.'" Thank you for that. Once again, bless your heart for doing that, and it looks good on the outside and it looks good in here. So, I don't know if I can do some more whatever, but keep up the good work. Bless your heart. It says, "We have taken God out of the schools and replaced the hallways with policemen." It said, "We expelled God and told him not to come back." If there, if those in America that believe in murder, in an ignorant lifestyle, and support these people and their values, then they can't be trusted in God. It says, "There's an amazing thing that at this time, with such a concerted effort, is underway to erase God and the role of faith in the American public life." But when we look around, Washington, D.C., it's filled with Christian religious symbols. They plaster the walls and the monuments with "In God we trust," and it's evident that "In God we trust" plays a role in American heritage. And I'll close with this, and I just didn't notice it coming this fast, but, you know, we're trying to go to the one-world system and the one-world government, and government seems to be trying to take over everything. They're trying to get it to where you go to England or France or whatever and buy a pound of bologna for a dollar, it's on the same price scale, get the bologna here for a dollar here or there, but if you want plenty of bologna today, just go to Washington, D.C., and you get all you want. Amen? So anyhow, I just want to close with that, and God bless you once again for the "In God we trust," and keep up the good work. Amen? God bless you.
Thank you, sir.
Next speaker would be Kristi Eriksen.
Good evening. Hi, how are you? My name is Kristi Eriksen, and I'm from Vanceboro. At the Vanceboro Christian Help Center, my address, my physical address would be 1185 State Camp Road. The center's is 411 White Street. So, I come to you today, and I didn't realize this until I was going through our paperwork. The Vanceboro Christian Help Center is a center that's sort of like RCS here in New Bern, but we're in Vanceboro. The center, we've taken over in January, and going through paperwork and talking to some of our businesses, the county used to provide some funds to our center. I realized that I was late in that. I do have my information ready for that part, whether it'll be next year or what, but I wanted to come before y'all today or tonight to let you know a little bit about what we're needing and why. Our purpose is to feed our community, to make sure that our food insecurities from our county are met. Vanceboro, actually, and I was shocked at this because I thought Harlow would be the lowest, but Vanceboro's actually 41.2% of poverty, and that was shocking to me. And I got that off the census. Also, our numbers, I had a pamphlet that I had given out, but I was told that I couldn't do that right away. So, with that, it has my numbers on there of what we're serving. In January, we had households of 143 and 334 individuals. As of our last numbers that went into Food Bank, we're up to 507 individuals and 204 families. So, our increase in food supply is going up, or our demand, our supplies are going down. We serve all of the western part of Craven County, from Dover, Fort Barnwell, out towards Wilmar, Bridgestone, all the surrounding counties. And like I said, we are like an RCS, we're just a smaller version. We are needing funding so that we can provide more equipment and more items to supply the needs that are coming up daily. We do have several programs in place. One of those is a summer feed program that Craven County Schools has asked for us to do. We will start that on the 13th of June. We also do work with Food Bank of Eastern North Carolina.
Go ahead and finish your thought.
Of Eastern North Carolina, so we partner with them, and we also partner with RCS. So, we're just coming to you today to ask for, is that on time? To ask for help, so anyway.
We thank you, and that information will be distributed to the board this evening.
Okay, and it has everything on there from our budget all the way through to...
Okay, thank you.
How many in Harlow you said?
How many in Harlow? I do not know their figures.
She's missing Harlow.
She just said that she was just comparing Vanceboro with the Harlow District.
Yes.
That's right. Okay, thank you. Is that it, Mr. Vice Chair? Okay, thank you, sir. Thank you to those citizens that spoke before the board this evening. All right, Commissioners, next you have the consent agenda. You have the minutes of the May 16th, 2022 regular session, also the minutes of the May 19th and May 20th reconvened sessions, tax releases and refunds, requests for a public hearing for Project Marlin, a request for a public hearing for Project Bluefin, the renewal of the county administration parking lot lease, the medical examiner budget amendment, and the elections budget amendment.
Chairman, I make a motion, we approve all of those.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second that we would approve all. Could I ask that we would, if you, Commissioner Mark, would allow, to let's pull item G, the elections budget amendment, if you don't mind?
Okay.
All right, the second from Commissioner Mitchell, is that okay?
amended.
All right, so we would approve A through F. We have the motion and a second, any discussion on the motion? Hear none, Madam Clerk, if you will, please call the roll.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Liner?
Yes.
Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes. All right, now we would go to item G under the consent agenda for the elections budget amendment, the legal advertising for the July 26th, 2022 runoff. I'm going to ask if Ms. Melanie Ray will come forward, if she will, at this time. Ms. Ray, tell us just a little bit about it, and my main reason for asking you to come up here is for other purposes, but go through this just a little bit, if you will.
Yes, and the runoff, the city of New Bern runoff, which is July 26th, was not anticipated, obviously, so we will have to run an ad in the paper, our legal notices, to advertise this election, which will be in this current fiscal year, and we're about out of money in this current fiscal year, so that's what the budget amendment is for, so we can take care of those legal notices and properly notice them on time.
As far as the election itself, it will come out of the next fiscal budget?
Yes, and this will also be reimbursed, it's reimbursable expense. All costs for the July 26th runoff will be reimbursed by the city of New Bern.
Okay. Any questions on this one issue?
Just a comment, so everybody knows, this election is just for three different races in the city.
Yes, it is the city of New Bern runoff. It is not a second primary, it is just the city of New Bern runoff for mayor, Ward 1 and Ward 2.
And that's where none of the candidates got 50% plus one.
Correct.
All right, any other questions on this budget amendment? All right, hear none, do I have a motion that we approve?
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion on the motion for the $1,800? Hear none, Madam Clerk, if you will, please call the roll.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Liner?
Yes.
Commissioner Mark?
He said yes.
Oh, Commissioner McCabe?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes. And why Ms. Ray is up here, the main reason I wanted to come before us is definitely to share that information, but also she will be leaving us soon. And on behalf of this Board of Commissioners, I just, and the citizens of this county, I wanted to thank you for what you've done for us. How many years you been as our elections director?
Almost nine years.
Nine years. I think you've been very fair to all of us, no matter what a party affiliation we were from. You treated everybody the same, and I think you've tried to do a good job in representing the citizens of this county, and I just want to publicly thank you. Let's give her a round of applause.
Let me say, it is my dream job, it always was. I've loved it from day one, and due to other reasons that most people know, it's an opportunity that I could not pass up. I only have four more years, then I can retire, but I'm very young, turned 57 Thursday, so... But I love this county, I'm staying in this county, and, you know, not leaving the county, and I'm just thankful and humbled and honored to being able to serve the citizens of Craven County and y'all.
Thank you for your service.
Thank you. All right, Commissioners, agenda item number four next would be the Craven Aging Planning Board Recommended Budget for the fiscal year 2022-23. We have Mr. Clayton Gaskins, the chair of that board. Good evening, sir.
So, I'm going to be speaking from the top right corner, it's the page called DOA 73, Department of Aging Form. If you'll look, does everyone have that?
Yep.
If you'll look at the first column, column A, over to the extreme right, total, at the bottom of that is the NGA that Craven County was awarded for this upcoming fiscal year, $552,328. So, above that and over to the extreme left, you'll see all of the providers. We have added veteran services this year as a new provider in the amount of $2,000, and then we have decreased carts, the transportation. But at any rate, this is, we typically do this in the month of May, we were late getting the NGA, and now I'm kind of on a tight wire of trying to get this expedited so that the AAA can get it entered in the ARMS software system so the providers will have access to it on July 1. We will very likely, Commissioner Liner sits on this board with me, as you all know, and he and I were just talking, and there may still be maybe $500, less than $500 that we have to come back in July to get that amended, so.
Commissioner Liner, you got anything you want to add?
Sure, I make a motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the recommended budget, any discussion on the motion? Hear none, Madam Clerk, if you will, please call the roll.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Liner?
Yes.
Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes. Thank you, Clayton, appreciate it. On the departmental matters, item five would be Sheriff, Mr. Chip Hughes. Good evening, sir.
Got two items before y'all this evening, both of them have to do with our detention center. We've got budget amendments. One, the first one has to do with jail medical. Throughout the entire year, our occupancy there at the jail has been well above where we are supposed to be. Much of that is outside of our control because we do house all prisoners from all agencies within the county, and especially when the feds come in and assist us with drug work and stuff, we house those as well. So, we have had an increase in medical expenses substantially just by virtue of having that many more inmates in our jail on a daily basis. So, we're asking for, we're going to be over by about $274,894.97, and we're requesting the funds to be moved over to cover that deficit. We've also are looking at other ways to provide medical attention in our facility. So, when these things happen, where inmates would normally be transported to the hospital for care, we're looking at ways where we can try to provide that medical assistance in-house, which will save us a substantial amount of money also.
All right, any questions for the sheriff?
Do you have a nurse in-house?
Yes, ma'am, not 24/7. We just have them for a limited amount of time each day, roughly 16 hours. But what we're looking at now is we're talking with physicians that would actually spend a day doing sick call in-house, and also have nurses on staff and physician assistants that, let's say, an inmate gets a cut on their head, normally they will be sent to the hospital now. These type of situations will be able to be handled in-house, and once they go to the hospital, that's when the bills really rack up for us. So, we do a very, very good job of getting these inmates that aren't violent offenders on an ankle bracelet the minute we know they have to go to the hospital, so the county is not having to cover that. But there is times when they are violent offenders and they are not eligible to be put on the bracelets.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Sheriff, I have a question for the sheriff. When another agency, like the federal government, like the state government, says house these inmates, do they reimburse the sheriff's department or the county for any medical cost associated with those individuals?
Yes, ma'am. So, if we're housing for another agency, then they do pick up the bill on the medical expenses. When the feds come in and assist us with the rest, and we're using them for manpower, but it's our case, and they need medical attention, then it is on us, if we're the case agents.
Okay, I didn't understand the difference, thank you.
And unfortunately, this year, you know, we haven't been able to house out-of-county prisoners because of COVID, and no one will take ours either. That's why our numbers have consistently been well over 300.
Okay, additional questions?
I make a motion to approve?
Okay, we have a motion and approve, a second to approve the budget amendment of $450,000. Commissioner Liner, discussion?
Sheriff, Sheriff Jack, somebody explain this to me. I know you explained it to me before, but you asked for $274,895, but we're giving you $450,000, is that to carry you through July?
So, Commissioner Liner, on May 27th, the jail was already $274,894.97 over budget. The projections based on who's incarcerated now and consistent medical bills for the year projected to be at $450,000. So, when you look at that budget amendment, you'll see there's four lines. There's some overage in revenue in inmate welfare, which is a commissary system, there's an overage in state board prisoners, and overage in misdemeanors, and then the rest, the $177,000 is the remainder that comes from the general fund that's not budgeted now.
We are using some of our revenues to help.
Right, so he had some offsetting things in there.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
All right, additional questions, discussion from the board? Hear none, we do have a motion and a second to approve the budget amendment of $450,000. Hear no further discussion on the motion. Madam Clerk, if you will, please call the roll.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Liner?
Yes.
Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes. All right, item B.
Yes, sir, this is inmate welfare or the commissary items. It's actually a good thing, we are with the increased number of inmates, then we are having to purchase much more commissary to turn around and sell to the inmates. So, this is one of our revenue generators. However, we did not project that we would be over these numbers for the entire year as much as we have been. So, we have to pay invoices for Oasis, who is our commissary provider, and this is all the goods that inmates can purchase and that we allow them to have while in there. And of course, there is a commission tacked on to that, which helps us offset some of these costs that we're talking about.
All right, any questions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the budget amendment in the amount of $90,000. Any further discussion on the motion? Hear none, Madam Clerk, if you will, please call the roll.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Liner?
Yes.
Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes. Sheriff, as we always try to do, any other information you desire to share with the board this evening?
No, I'd like to thank each of the Commissioners for the budget, worked very closely with our county manager on it. We have a good budget, and I want to thank y'all for that, also for the words that y'all have allowed to be put in here. I think that's great, it looks wonderful, I know the people appreciate it, same on the outside, and I do want to thank Melanie Ray for her years of services, and as an elected official, she has always returned my phone calls and just been wonderful to work with, so.
Any questions for the sheriff? Thank you for being here, sir, appreciate it. All right, agenda item number six would be Finance, Mr. Craig Warren.
Good evening.
Good evening, sir.
Have several items on the agenda for your consideration tonight. The first one is a budget amendment for the Register of Deeds. The Register of Deeds collects real estate excess tax on all real property transactions recorded. Of the amount collected, approximately 48% is remitted to the North Carolina Department of Revenue on a monthly basis. Additionally, 1.5% of all fees collected by the Register of Deeds excluding excess tax are required to be set aside for the Register of Deeds Supplemental Pension Fund. Collections to date are running ahead of schedule, creating a projected shortage in the portion remitted to the state and to the ROD, or Register of Deeds Pension Line. It is estimated that $254,000 will be needed through the remainder of the fiscal year.
All right, any questions for Mr. Warren?
Boy, I do.
Commissioner Mitchell?
I think this is probably just the way it was written, it says, "Collections are running ahead of schedule."
Yeah.
To me, that sounds like we have more money coming in. So, how do we have a projected shortage?
So, the real estate market is really, there's been a lot of increased sales this fiscal year, and so that number is based on the projected sales back in July. So, with that activity and the recording of all the deeds that have, transactions that have taken place, those have exceeded what we originally projected.
Commissioner Mitchell, let me try it a little differently. So, out of every fee that's collected, 48% is remitted back to the state. So, we've collected on our side more revenue as well, so, but this is the projection, because we've collected more on our side, the state side's gone up proportionally, so we did not budget enough to remit to the state, so Craig's coming in now to accommodate that transaction.
Okay, we collected more than we planned, so we owe the state more than we planned, and we just didn't have it in the budget? That's not the way this is written.
So...
Collect more, how do you have a shortage?
Because we didn't budget enough to send to the state because we didn't know we were going to collect more.
Okay, so we're moving money around, not that there's a shortage.
Right, correct, there's not, shortage is the wrong word, meaning we've collected more, we got to send more to the state.
Okay.
More revenue, more expense.
Okay, got it.
All right, any additional questions? Hear none, do I have a motion and a second to approve the budget amendment of $254,000?
Second.
I have a motion from Commissioner Smith, a second from Commissioner Liner, any discussion on the motion? Hear none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Liner?
Yes.
Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes. All right, B.
Okay, the second item is the occupancy tax budget amendment. Our occupancy tax collections countywide for the current year are running approximately 49.5% ahead of last year's collections and have already exceeded original budget estimates. As a result of the increased collections, the portion of occupancy taxes collected by the county and remitted to the Tourism Development Authority would also exceed budget estimates. It is estimated an additional $175,000 in budgeted revenue and a corresponding expenditure will be needed in order to continue remitting the TDA's portion through the end of the fiscal year.
All right, any questions?
Make a motion that we approve us?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to approve the budget amendment of one hundred and seventy-five thousand. Any discussion on the motion? Here none, Madam Clerk, please call the robe. Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Liner?
Yes.
Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes.
All right, C.
Okay, the next item is the budget amendment for the rescue squads. Our ambulance service fees that we bill and collected by the county on behalf of the following rescue squads are anticipated to exceed original budget projections. It is estimated that an additional one hundred and fifty-four thousand will be needed in order to continue remitting the squad's payments through the end of the fiscal year. The projected increases in revenue estimates by squad are fourteen thousand for New Bern Craven Rescue, four thousand for Fort Barnwell, thirty-two thousand for Bridgeton Rescue, seventeen thousand for Vanceboro, and two thousand for Cove City, and eighty-five thousand for Township Seven.
All right, any questions for Mr. Warren? Here none, do I have a motion?
They're moved.
Second. I have a motion and a second, any discussion on the motion? Here none, Madam Clerk, and the motion is for one hundred and fifty-four thousand. Madam Clerk, please call the robe. Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Liner?
Yes.
Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes.
All right, D.
Okay, the final item is a public school building capital fund application. Each year, both the Board of Education and the Board of County Commissioners jointly approve a project application to be submitted to the North Carolina Department of Public Instruction. This application is required in order to draw down lottery proceeds that have been allocated to Craven County by the state in the Public School Building Capital Fund. These funds are restricted and it can only be used for school construction projects or to retire debt service that has been incurred as a result of school construction projects. And that's what we will use our lot, draw down for this debt service.
Okay, and we are requesting a million dollars, correct?
Correct.
Okay, all right, any questions?
I have a comment, Mr. Chair. If you look a third from the bottom, it says estimated project beginning date, July two thousand and six. Estimated project completion date, December two thousand and eight. I know that simply that the document has not been updated and that's not what we mean.
I think that's when the barion took place for this debt.
Yeah, the original debt was in two thousand and seven.
This was for Creekside, in there for Creekside, when we did the cops years ago?
Yeah, in the school, so what I typically do, I'll let the schools know the amount of debt service and they'll complete the rest of it. And so I think that's the time period.
Okay, so Creekside was completed?
Yes ma'am.
Okay.
Now, okay, additional questions? All right, you got this debt here, what other debt do we have for our school system?
We have a two thousand and nine refunding that, or a set of bonds that were issued in oh-nine that we're still paying.
Do you know how much that is?
I think, they'll be paid off next year, I know that for.
Two thousand and nine.
The two thousand and nine, and then the others will be twenty twenty-seven.
Okay, all right, any further questions? All right, here none, do I have a motion?
Motion.
I have a motion, Commissioner Mark, do I have a second? Second from Commissioner Smith. Is to file this application jointly with the Board of Education, asking for the million dollars in lottery proceeds. Any further discussion on the motion? Here none. Madam Clerk, please call the robe. Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Liner?
Yes.
Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes.
All right, thank you, sir. All right, agenda item number seven is appointments, Commissioners, you have there before you, pending appointments you have there, the Community Child Protection Team, the Craven County Board of Adjustments, Craven County Clean Sweep, and the Board of Equalization and Review. If you remember, there are a number of these that we're waiting till after July one, when our new set of bylaws will take in effect. But do you have any nominations for any of these? All right, here none, we will go to current. The first one would be the Craven Aging Planning Board, you have there.
Sheriff, we hold that until the next meeting, please.
All right, we have Commissioner Liner desires to hold it, here none, any objection? All right, we would defer consideration. Next would be the EMS Services Board, you have there the New Bern Police Department These are two, these are two separate?
Correct, she's seeking reappointment and Lieutenant Fisher is seeking original appointment because he's going to replace Captain Fednia. I'd like to nominate both of these individuals.
Okay, we have a nomination for both of these individuals, are there additional nominations from the board? Here none, we will accept both of these by acclamation. Next would be the Fire Tax Commissioner from Township Five, Harlow.
I'll bring them back to the next meeting.
Okay, ask for the defer consideration, is that all right with the board? Here no objection, we move to JCPC Council. You have Ms. Susan Hall, who seeks reappointment, which is our board.
Nominator.
Okay, we have a nomination from Ms. Hall, are there additional nominations from the floor? Here none, she will be accepted by acclamation also. All right, you see the upcoming terms expiring in July two thousand and twenty-two, please take note of those. Are there any additional appointments to be made tonight? All right, here none. We will go next to the County Attorney's Report, who is not here, do you have anything for him?
Yes, if you don't mind, I'll.
Yes.
I'll pretend tonight.
Yes.
Commissioners in service here for Arie Grady, I did speak with him this afternoon and felt comfortable presenting these to you. If there are questions, we may want to table that item when we get to it, if the board has it. But, Ms. Chairman, if you don't mind, I'll start with item A, approval of conveyance after expiration of upset bid period for parcel number five zero zero nine zero three one. The county was offered twelve hundred dollars, is completed the upset bid process. The county attorney recommends approval of the conveyance at the purchase price of twelve hundred dollars.
All right, what's desired of the board?
Moved.
Second. We have a motion and a second for the conveyance of parcel number five dash zero zero nine dash zero three one, any discussion on the motion? Here none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passed, all right, B.
Okay, item B, this is a bit of an unusual one, where we are being asked for conveyance of our ownership to be given to the city of New Bern for two oh-eight Daniel Street. It's in New Bern, parcel number eight zero one eight zero six three. The city of New Bern has requested the county agree, either to agree to pay a pro rata share of the cost of demolishing the structure located on the property, or B, convey the county's interest so that the city becomes responsible for the total cost of demolition. The property was acquired jointly with the city of New Bern through a tax foreclosure with past due taxes and cost of foreclosure totaling four thousand, three hundred and nine dollars and forty cents. The tax value of the property is currently eighteen thousand. Copies of all the attachments are found in eight B. The Commissioners, again, have the choice of either agreeing to pay a pro rata share or conveying your interest to the city of New Bern.
All right, what's desired of the board?
Let's move it to the city.
All right, is that a motion?
Yeah.
All right, we have a motion and a second, any discussion on the motion? And the motion is for the conveyance of eight dash zero one eight dash zero six three, any further discussion on the motion? Here none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passed.
Okay, last Commissioners, item C, we have an initial offer to purchase, real last purchase is spelled wrong there, purchase real property at two ten Duffy Street in New Bern, parcel number eight zero one eight zero five seven. The county's received an offer in the amount of forty-five hundred dollars for the real property, which was acquired jointly with the city of New Bern through a tax foreclosure with past due taxes and cost of foreclosure totaling nineteen hundred and fourteen dollars and twenty-one cents. The tax value of the property is nine thousand dollars. Copies of the offer to purchase and subsequent information is included. The property is jointly owned by the city of New Bern, who has already approved the initial offer by their board. So the Commissioners are recommended to adopt the resolution approving the transaction, authorizing the upset bid process.
They moved.
All right, we have a motion from Commissioner Marks, second from Commissioner Liner, any discussion on the motion? Motion is to authorize upset bid for eight dash zero one eight dash zero five seven. Here no further discussion on the motion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passed. All right, anything else on the Attorney's Report?
No sir.
All right, you don't get paid for both of them.
Just once, just once, sir.
All right, next item would be the County Manager's Report.
Commissioners, I just, real brief, wanted to say what a success last week, we had our, we're going to call it our first annual employee appreciation picnic, because it's been so long since we had one. But it was well received by all the county employee, great feedback, really enjoyable time to spend with fellowship with our fellow employees. We haven't done a whole lot of that since twenty eighteen when Hurricane Florence hit. I know several Commissioners were able to attend and take in, you know, the event and it was really, really nice. And I think if it had been a little cooler, it would have been better, it was a little hot by the grills, but I think everyone had a good time. So, Ms. Chairman, that's all I have, unless somebody has a question for me.
Any questions for the County Manager?
Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, as we get into Commissioners' reports tonight, I failed on one thing before we started our meeting, I would ask the board just to allow me to do that before we get into the reports. We have representation tonight, I think, from leadership Craven. And Ms. Thomas, you've brought many with you here before, if you don't mind standing and introducing those with you this evening.
Good evening, my name is Sarah Thomas, this is Tony Lee, and I'm here in Orwood.
All right, we welcome all of you here this evening, appreciate your attendance. All right, Commissioners' report, let's start with Commissioner Mark.
Okay, number one, I got a number of calls congratulating us on In God We Trust. Secondly, the hospital has nominated a new president to take over when Ray leaves, and that's it.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner McCabe?
Yes, I also got a number of calls about In God We Trust last week. I do have here, from the Craven County Health Department, we're having a free screening event Saturday, June eleventh, from ten AM to two PM, at the Harlow Community Center, one twenty-five Godhead School Road in the Alblock. Everyone who wants to come, you can come and get tested for the height, weight, blood pressure, I mean high blood pressure, cholesterol, and blood sugar. So, anyone who wants to come, is June eleventh or this coming Saturday? And also to have, for the sheriff, this coming Saturday, right? You, Laviola?
Go ahead.
They have, I forgot what event, at Creekside Park for you?
Yes, sir.
From nine to two?
Yes, sir, it's a career expo, it's where people can come out, see what their sheriff's office does, see some of our equipment, ask questions. We're hoping that we'll be able to recruit folks to come work with Sheriff's Office, whether it be detention center or deputies.
Right, that's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Mitchell?
I don't have anything, sir.
All right, Commissioner Liner?
Yes, sir, a couple of things, I'd like to thank the board for coming up Memorial Day. I had the opportunity to speak at Memorial Day celebration, and I'd like to thank you all for showing up there, had a good crowd, I was really surprised, first time we've been out there in person in two years, and I think we had over four hundred people out there, so it was a good turnout, a good showing on that. Next, I'd like to congratulate all the graduates, it's going to graduate this Saturday, school, I'll be leaving Friday to go to Charlotte, my granddaughter graduates up there on Saturday as well. Other than that, that's it.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Smith?
I'd like to congratulate Mr. Liner for fantastic job he did at Memorial Day service and speaking to the group, he did a great job. And also, on the Saturday prior to Memorial Day, there was the Johnny Simpson's Day, and I attended that, it was well-attended also, and it was a great time there. Several officials attended that event as well.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Vice Chair?
Last Thursday night, we, a group of us met in James City for a town hall event, first one I've ever done there because of COVID. I had no idea what to expect, we had over fifty people show up. We had Sheriff Hughes came, Wendy Johnson from the Department of Transportation, Don Baumgartner and Chad Strawn from our, from our planning department, Leslie Young, who's our tax officer, and Lauren Wargo, who's standing out in the hall there, Jack's assistant. And we had a spirited two-plus hour discussion. We talked about a lot of things, obviously each of those department heads got up and spoke about what's going on within their department. We got good feedback, I was just very pleased of the turnout and the questions. And we got a few things that we need to get back to the folks with, but all in all, it was just a good sharing of information. So, I was very pleased with that, and we agreed that we're going to do it regularly. So, that's it.
All right, thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Commissioners, I would like to just remind you, June fourteenth, and to our citizens, about the pie luncheon that will be at the New Bern Riverfront Convention Center, starts at eleven-thirty. A great day that's been planned, anybody that has not gotten a ticket, don't mind calling myself or Ms. Darlene Brown at the Craven County Board of Education. But to our Commissioners, I know a number of you have other obligations that day you have already told me about, but if any of you don't, have you changed your plans, I do have some tickets available, please let me know, and we'd love to have you.
June fourteenth?
June fourteenth.
What time is that?
It's at eleven-thirty. So, we'd love to have you join us for that day. And that is in support, the funds go to support our classroom teachers, and it's a great organization. Also, I just, I know it's been mentioned here twice already, but I do want to acknowledge Commissioner Liner. I thought he did a great job in, on short notice, in bringing forth, as a keynote speaker for our Memorial Day celebration. It is a very solemn time as a nation. I can remember as a child, Granddaddy, when he was serving on this board, I used to go with him to those, those days of recognition. And I can remember so many from my past of widows who husbands had passed and, you know, and they would tell me as a child, this is where I'm going to be buried at one day. And many of them have passed away since and are there. We owe a deep gratitude to all those who serve, have served, and have not come home. And that's what Memorial Day is all about. But we're very blessed as a nation, and definitely, I'm very appreciative for our Board of Commissioners acknowledging In God We Trust, and that we have shown that this county does recognize God, and I appreciate that. All right, Commissioners, anything else to bring before, for us tonight? All right, we do have a closed session for personnel issue, do you have a general statute on that?
General statute, one forty-three dash three eighteen dot eleven dot A six.
Okay, do I have a motion?
They're moved.
I have a motion and a second, then we go into closed session, any discussion on the motion? Here none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, all right, we will take about a five-minute recess. All right, we will take about a five-minute recess.